We'll call it order in the legislative session 2017-06 for March 7, 2017. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread; forgive us our trespasses, and we will give those who trespass against us. And it is not temptation, but deliverance unto me. Thy name is sweet and power, for the Lord is pure. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce tonight, I'd like to welcome, if we could, the Mayor of Sharp Town, Doug Guznell. Mayor, glad to have you here.
Hey, Mayor.
First item on the agenda, the approval of legislative minutes from February 21, 2017. Entertained a motion to approve?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Mrs. Hurley, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, county council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item we have on the agenda for business this evening is Resolution Number 18, 2017, confirming the appointment of Katerina Enerfeldt to the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Board.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 18, 2017?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next, we have Resolution Number 19, 2017, to authorize the county executive to accept grant funds in the amount of $42,730 from the Maryland Judiciary Administrative Office of the Courts. The Wacomiko County Circuit Court submitted a request for security funding and was approved funding for a camera system upgrade, audiovisual intercom system, duress control system upgrade, and access control system upgrade at the courthouse. And we have Sheri Mineshine here from Circuit Court.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 19, 2017?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Hi.
Glad to have you here. Make sure you use the mic and announce, even though we've already announced, but just...
Absolutely. Sheri Mineshine, I'm with the Circuit Court for Wacomiko County, I'm the deputy court administrator.
Okay, great. If you could just give us an overview, that's kind of what we're looking for.
As you heard, we were awarded some grant funding or awarded funding from the administrative office of the courts to support the ongoing upgrades for our camera system, as well as access control. We have duress alarms that are necessary in the court that need to be upgraded, and an audiovisual intercom because we do have blind doors. So we were awarded those funds, we were pleased that we received additional funds to continue with the upgrade.
Okay, very good. Any questions? Are these grants that just sort of come down, or do you have to make the prolonged requests and the extended paperwork?
Year by year.
Every year?
Year by year, and each year they kind of come down, actually the administrative office of the courts did come down in, exactly, September of 2016, and provided us feedback on what we could request, and so it is an annual request as long as the funds are available with the Maryland judiciary.
Right, sure. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 19, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thanks again.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Certainly.
Next, we have Resolution Number 20, 2017, approving a request from Chesapeake Housing Mission to waive building permit fees. Chesapeake Housing Mission is a nonprofit organization that works on housing projects for low-income families in Wacomiko County. They do not charge their clients for their work, and they would like to keep their operating expenses down.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 20, 2017?
Second.
Second.
Motion's second, discussion. Councilman Kilmer?
We have Mr. Taylor and Mr. Brown here representing the Chesapeake Housing Mission.
Good evening. If you could, for the record, just grab a microphone and let us know who you are for the public, and we know who you are, but...
Sure. Don Taylor, Executive Director of Chesapeake Housing Mission.
Alan Brown, Chairman of Chesapeake Housing Mission.
Okay. Pleased to have you here. And evidently, I guess, there are building permit fees, you've been busy.
We've been operating for seven years. We operate in all four lower counties, about 20 jurisdictions. So, Wacomiko and City of Cambridge are the only two jurisdictions that require us to do, have permit fees paid. We are the lowest-cost operation in all of United Way. Our overhead fees, or our overhead is 4%.
Okay.
We have no full-time paid people. We bring volunteers, over 1,100 last year, that actually do the work, supervise. We get construction people to design and get permits to do that.
Very good.
We started about seven years ago, we're doing about 15. We're now up to doing about 50 to 60 a year. Right now, we have four waiting.
Is that right?
Please hit.
Okay.
We really get ramped up in the late February, early March time. We'll be doing six more in the month of March, and half of those are from Wacomiko County.
That's a lot of work, that's a lot of work, good cause as well. Councilman Hall?
Don, who are your wheelchair ramps for? Who do you provide them to?
We are here to provide home repair for people living below the poverty level. We don't operate above that. They all come from MAC, basal health departments, they give us the referrals, and they work with us, the case managers work with us. And so Catherine Jones had basal, Patty Tingle had MAC, we work very closely with them. As a matter of fact, our clients are so, such in a dire state of health that we reprioritize monthly, and we many times have to move projects around to accommodate someone. I was in Pittsfield today, lady's 67, she's had diabetes for 45 years. Her husband died.
We also get referrals from, actually, like Sure Up will work with MAC and other organizations, and they go through MAC, and that's how we get a number of our referrals. And like Don says, we have to prioritize the ones who have the most need.
So I was down in Quantico yesterday, a couple in their 80s, he can't get in and out anymore, and she's struggling to do that. So we've got a ramp scheduled for her in 60 days, because it usually takes us about that long to get a bunch of stuff.
So the fees that you were paying, where did the money come from for them? Did they come from donations?
Donations. We have, we get no federal or state money.
Okay.
Henson, Hazel, Purdue, Parsons, all the foundations, BFWs, a wide variety, quite honestly, of funds. Anywhere, and sometimes even as poor as our clients are, we get $50, and that goes to the next one. It's quite touching when that happens, because you're looking at where they're living, they can't afford to put that $50 out.
Right. I guess I was asked a year or so ago by, I think, one of the, either the Ruetons or the BFW in Powellville, about permit, they wanted to know whether you needed permits for wheelchair ramps, and I was surprised that we did.
Well, what we, it's, depending upon which jurisdiction you're in, sometimes it's iffy, we do it so that we stay within the codes, and the planning and zoning here at Salzburg has been fantastic.
Do they still come out and inspect?
Yes.
They do come out and inspect. Now, the ones that you don't pay, jurisdictions you don't pay, do they inspect?
Yes.
Also, they still come out and do inspections?
All of us have inspected.
We have a tough crowd in planning and zoning, you know that, right?
You know, let me tell you, we've, they are just so responsive. We've had some emergencies, they'll turn them around, and email them back and forth, we'll come in and sign whatever we need to. And Melissa there, who I work with quite a bit, and if she works for anyone in the room, she's...
Right there, Jack Lennox.
Outstanding, I'll tell you. Guys have been great working with us. And we get in situations where we don't have setbacks, and the lines are too close, and we'll get somebody from planning and zoning out there and they'll work it out with us, you know, because, you know, we've just had situations that the client needed at Salzburg.
Right.
And if you're riding around town or the county, many of the ones you see now with salt treated lumber, those are some of the ones that we've done, they're a career profession. In fact, the, a number of groups and organizations have worked with us, Salisbury Police Department, they helped build one, a number of other organizations, the Rotary Clubs, always pitch in and do one or two a year.
A third of our volunteers are kids, high school kids.
Is that right?
Yep.
That's a good thing for them to participate in as well, sure.
Are they part of the VOTEC CTE program?
No, we've, we've talked with Parkside, and we've talked with Bennett about that. We end up getting Leo Lions, we get the Appalachia Groups, that I'm actually now working with the Salisbury Youth Civics Council, I think you're aware of them?
Oh, yes.
They're actually building one in two weeks for a lady up on Love Cabin Route, 82.
They also have Salisbury University and the university run, this is sure, they have a number of groups. Football, Tamek-Sullivan University, they really can go and get it done.
To see these, because I think leveraging our own people...
Right.
...to help our own people.
Yeah, it's good to see these groups come together, because they're so proud when they do that, and they're posting pictures all over.
And, and, you know, I think it builds communities. When you get people, our theme is give a day, and you're going to change somebody's life, and it happens, it happens constantly. Whether you're out in Quantico, you're on Nanicoke Road, you're out in Pittsfield, you're out in Willards, you're down in Chrisfield, it's all over.
And also the kids that we work with, many of them haven't seen people live like this, and so it's truly an experience for them, one that they remember, and it's something they're proud of at the end of the day. And some of them have never used a hammer before, or, you know, never done anything like this, so it's a rewarding experience for them.
So we're in Mardella Springs introducing high school kids to a guy with ALS, 47-years-old.
Did you say where the materials were coming from?
Actually, we bid that out. Our guy, who gives them to us 15% below anybody else, is Bayside, lumber in Chrisfield.
Do you ever have any housing projects that have leftover materials donated to you?
We, normally we have material lists that have to happen for that day. We have approached, we have an agreement with Home Depot where we get a certain amount of money for veterans. We've not been successful with Lowe's yet, so some of the money comes with strings, Parsons Home, you've got to be in Wacomiko County, you've got to be over 60. You know, so a lot of it doesn't, but some of it does, and we just try to comply with that.
Councilman Kilmer?
Yeah, I mean, I think you do great work, I mean, I think I've seen some of the ramps. So, you know, my concern is about granting kind of one organization, kind of a special, a special deal, and so I kind of, can you talk about what, you said only Cambridge and Wacomiko?
Only two jurisdictions.
Okay, and do you mean that other jurisdictions have waived the fees just for you, or that these other jurisdictions don't charge?
It's different. City of Salisbury, actually, I believe I'm right, passed a resolution to exempt organizations like us not charging 501(c)(3)'s, I believe that's the language, but they pushed that through.
All right.
In Berlin, we come back annually, the city, for the request. I'm not sure the background in Somerset, in terms of it's just, if it's just all nonprofits, or they just made an exemption for us. So it's been different, no matter which, depending upon which jurisdiction you were in. We would prefer that you give it to anyone doing what we do.
I'd prefer that, too.
Which is fine.
And that's not how the resolution's written right now, it's just for you specifically, which, you know, we've had some issues lately with granting specific exemptions, or, you know, specific bills written to benefit one specific group, and we've, you know, said, no, we don't like that, and then, you know, this is obviously a very worthy thing, but, you know, we kind of have to stick to the same principles. But, yeah, I mean, you know, if it was for any nonprofit that kind of met, you know, what you're doing, and again, I don't know how many of them there are, that, to me, seems...
There aren't any others.
Oh, there aren't any others, okay.
Doing what we're doing.
Well, yeah. Well, I mean, or, you know, nonprofits that are doing, you know, things, you know, targeted towards more low income, you know, some sort of building, you know, building materials and things like that, I mean, that's something I would, I would rather explore than having a resolution that singles your organization out by name, if you see what I'm saying.
Well, if we could temporarily get us to get started, especially we have a lot of permits waiting now, and then change that language to include other people, that, if that's suitable, that would be fantastic.
Well, I was looking at this, and there's no end date on here, it's like an open resolution.
Well, I think that that's easily something, I mean, we could move forward here, and then easily, I'm sure within, by the next meeting, we could have a resolution put together for nonprofits as a whole.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would ease my heartburn a little bit. And you mentioned that, you know, you've spent $700 in permit fees, that's money you've already paid, you're not looking for that to be forgiven, is that correct? So that's money you've already paid, so this is not retroactive, this is going forward? Okay, okay.
Well, like, you'd like to make it that way. We could build more projects if we could do it.
Well, it was unclear kind of by some of the stuff, but we weren't sure exactly what, you know, what was being asked, so, I don't know, I mean, so, I don't know, what is the rest of the council thinking, how should we go forward with this?
I guess my next question is wheelchair ramps are basically all you do?
Oh, no, no, we do, we do critical home repair, say, wheel repair roof, if we can. If you're on a mobile home, it's a little difficult, we've done that. We've done bathroom floors, we've done many different projects, but about 90% of it is ramps. That's what the demand is, it surprised us.
Well, the inside work, you really don't have to have permits for, a lot of it you don't have.
Most of that you don't, you're right, unless you get into the plumbing side, and then we go, we're going to get a contractor to help us out on that, because so many times we have low-skill labor involved.
And again, that's for people that are in need, for example, widening the bathroom door, putting grab bars on it, or individuals who actually need that kind of help to make their life a little more reasonable to live in their home.
So our theme is warmer safer drier, and if somebody comes to us with something that they need to do that, you know, we're going to try to be there to help them do it.
I think, I think I would like to see us, this wheelchair ramp, especially, you know, take care of the fees on that. There's other people that build them, I know that, like I say, one of the, one of the groups in Powellville has built ramps before, so go ahead and pass this now as it is, and then look at it later.
I think, in light of how many members of the community you have involved, it's the least we could do, and that being said as well, to solve the other issue, I would say within two weeks, we could, within the next meeting, we could easily have some formal legislation addressing a broader perspective. Councilman Hall?
I just didn't know if it was possible right now to go ahead and broaden the scope of this resolution to just, just deal with the 501(c)(3) nonprofits, you know, so we can broaden it to more than one nonprofit, but narrow it to just the 501(c)(3)'s...
Right.
...within this resolution, or...
That's a very good point, I was thinking about that as well when Mark was talking, but, you know, it's something that I think we'd want to run through Mr. Baker first, and I think it'd be good to see what the city has, and make sure we're covering all of our bases, instead of putting something together now and then finding out we have to amend it anyway.
That's fine.
Any other discussion?
I think I could probably look at that.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 20, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
If you need us to come back, we'd love to, and we'd love to have this group come out on the Saturday. You don't want me doing calls.
You...
Oh, come on.
Joe doesn't know one end of the hammer from the other, I'll tell you.
He can learn.
If you'd contact our office and let Mrs. Hurley know, then we would, we would be able to attend. Great, all right? Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution Number 23, 2017, extending the audit contract by in-between Wacomiko County, Maryland, and PKS and Company, PA, for fiscal years 2017 through 2019. PKS and Company has submitted an engagement letter to extend the audit contract dated April 2014 for three additional years. The county has used PKS for its external auditing services since 1999, so they understand the county's financial systems, operations, and policies and procedures. In prior years, they had met all the audit deadlines, and they are responsive to the county's request for additional services, special projects, and assistance with questions from council and county personnel. In addition, the Director of Finance is in favor of extending the audit contract for three more years.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 23, 2017?
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
So, so this was not bid, correct? And it doesn't require a bid, but it can be?
That is correct, it's not required, and it was not put out to bid.
Okay.
I see this includes more than just, just Wacomiko County, well, it's all Wacomiko County entities, I guess, when you talk about the local management board and not tourism and some of the other, some of the other things, so, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 23, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Mr. Baker, good evening.
Good evening. The only item on the agenda, my agenda, is the introduction of Bill 2017-04, an act to repeal the Wacomiko County Purchasing Manual that was approved and adopted on June 17, 1987, and to adopt a new purchasing manual that shall govern the procurement process in Wacomiko County.
Entertained a motion to introduce legislation Bill 2017-04?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? I believe we've had a couple of work sessions on this, and Mr. Bryce has done an excellent job, I think, in keeping us up to date with what they've, what changes they've made. Any other discussions at all? No. Seeing none. Councilman Matt Holloway, is this a roll call or an introduction, or just a final vote?
Just for introduction, so, not a roll call.
Okay.
Roll call for introduction.
Okay.
Roll call.
We will? Okay.
Just for introduction.
We're going to do a roll call or an introduction?
We can do it.
Starting with Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Councilman Dodd?
Aye.
Councilman Joe Holloway?
Aye.
Councilman Ernie Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Matt Holloway?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Legislative Bill 2017-04 has been introduced, is it going to be able to set a public hearing?
We can hold the public hearing on April the 4th at 6:00 PM, if everyone agrees to that.
Fine, okay, that's great, okay. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
That's all I have for that.
Thank you very much. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name and your concern. Mayor, floor is yours if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
You can certainly come here, certainly.
Join us.
Not every day we get a mayor that visits.
Yay.
Pleasure to have you.
Thank you. I'm here about the county tier mapping.
Okay.
About two months ago, my council rep called me and asked me if I was satisfied with our town comp plan, and I said, and I didn't know why he was calling me, he told me they were, county was updating their tier map, I got no problem, we put a lot of work in on it, passed it, done.
Right.
Well, then, I saw preliminary map of what the county's putting out for tier map, and saw that it's overlapping Sharp Town's tier map, and I had a problem with that.
Right.
Big problem. What we have is tier two, which means we can annex and supply water and sewer, is going to be tier three in the county, overlap, which means a contractor can buy a piece of land right on the corporate boundaries and put in, I guess, high-density oncepting, which is unacceptable. And part of the, part of the tier three goes right through our wellhead protection plan, unacceptable.
Okay.
I mean, I got three or four, three or four things, you know. I had a meeting last night with Keith, Keith Hall, he came out and talked to us, and he was telling me that Sharp Town's water and sewer plan was not finished, and we thought it was. Well, he gave us a map that was worked up in 2010. Well, we had taken that map, reworked it in 2013.
Right.
With the help of a guy from the county, from Public Works, Joseph somebody, I can't, I don't know his name, but the tape is not very clear, I might have to step looking at it today. We did it, Senate had Tracy Gordy print it up for sewer and water, turned it back into the county, that was in 2013, but it was supposed to be finished in February 2014. Had that been done, my sewer and water map would have been done, and the tier two would have been untouchable, you wouldn't be able to put a tier three over top of it.
Right.
So I don't feel it's Sharp Town's fault that, that water and sewer wasn't finished. It was taken to the county and it wasn't finished, due to personnel leaving and then just dropping it, dropping it in a hole. So there's two or three issues here that I think is unfair to Sharp Town.
Okay.
If you look at our map, our comp plan, and our sewer and water plan, and everything else, it all is the same, there's no change to it. We didn't, we didn't try to propose any tremendous area, you know, we just took just a little bit of land outside of our growth area, or what we call our growth area, and that was it. But now, the county's going to take three-quarters of it, got a problem.
Okay. I think a large part of that, in talking to Councilman Kilmer, and talking to Mr. Lennox and Mr. Hall, because of your concerns, we pulled it off the legislative agenda.
I appreciate that.
Yes, as far as to vote on it as a resolution tonight, and we put it into a work session so that we can address what your concerns are, and I think we'll, hopefully we'll wrap that up, and between now and two weeks from now, we'll fine-tune that and, of course, make you a party to that, so you can...
Can I attend that, or survive from my...
Well, hopefully, I'm hoping that before we even come to the, come to the meeting in two weeks, that we'll have some resolution to it that would be satisfactory to Sharp Town, and certainly would make sure we kept you as part of that, part of that process.
Just don't overlap my tier two with your tier three, and I'm happy.
That was, that was pretty loud and clear.
Yeah.
We'll stay around tonight while we, stay around tonight while we work on this, if you will.
Okay.
So I didn't identify myself.
Sorry.
My name's Doug Guznell, I'm president of council, Sharp Town.
Yeah, if the president of the Sharp Town Commission could stay for our work session, I think that would be helpful to everybody. I said last night it would be enlightening, and Doug took issue with the word enlightening, so it'll be helpful, how about that? It'll be helpful, so...
I would love to.
Did you attend any of our previous meetings?
I did not, I didn't even know about it.
You didn't know about it?
I haven't met to a council meeting in three or four years, I'm sorry.
Well, we'll be, we'll be, we're wrapping up the legislative now, anyway, so we'll be getting to that, it's the second item on the work session agenda, so it won't be that long.
You're requested to be here from now on, you're requested to be here from now on.
You've been told.
I have stepped into something.
They don't, they don't have PACS 14 up in Sharp Town now, Larry, so...
I was wondering if Sharp Town isn't familiar with what we're doing, how about the other municipalities or towns? Have they been notified?
I received a call from Delmar, yes, from Karen Wells in Delmar, and she had some concerns as well, but again, I know that Mr. Lennox and Mr. Hall have been on the phone for the last couple of days, trying to address...
Delmar's real supposed to be here tonight, but...
They were?
So they've been on the phone the last couple of days, trying to address all those concerns and, you know, get everybody on the same page.
Good.
I've been to Pittsfield's town hall meeting, and I've talked to Steve from Willards, so they're aware of what we're doing.
Very good, great.
I think, you know, this is kind of last minute, but the towns are aware now, and it's last minute, but it's not too late, so, you know, the planning staff, I know that they've, you know, been scurrying on this, you know, kind of unexpectedly, and so I appreciate, you know, their work on this, and, you know, their work to accommodate, and, and, you know, their work to accommodate, you know, to come up to Sharp Town and, you know, accommodate, uh, you know, whatever, um, the Sharp Town Town Commission needs. I know that they're willing to, to work and, and see what we can do. So, um, it's, you know, it's been going on for, I think, ten years, um, it's, you know, prior to this council.
Then it's not last minute.
Well, but it's, you know, it's, well, it's just kind of the last minute, so, uh, yeah, so, but, but it's not too late, so.
I was ready to correct you on that.
So, so, um, so it, we're, I, I, I think we'll work something out, so the towns, it's not too late for the towns, so.
I agree.
You owe a debt of gratitude to your representative in your, in the council district, Doug.
I do.
He does good work.
I do.
He does.
I compliment him every day.
Any other, uh, public comments if we could? Seeing none. Council comments. Councilman Dodd?
I thought we were gonna go down the road. Um, when was it, Thursday, we had a meeting with, um, one of the fire stations and, um, uh, a lot of discussion, and I want to thank everybody that attended that meeting. Everybody's been sending us emails, making phone calls. No decisions have been made on our part, but, um, I do want to make it clear that if somebody calls 911, they'll get help. Nobody's gonna be left in the dark or nobody's gonna be left without service. Um, also I'll point out, um, one of my kids, a school teacher, Mr. McCroby's sitting in the back, he's very active in the lives of many kids. It's good to see him here. I don't know what he's here for. I hope he don't beat up on us, but it's good to see you.
It's probably about your kids.
I doubt that.
Any other council comments? Seeing none. Um, the presidential comments, um, I don't have any presidential comments. I think I did, but I forgot, so we'll, we'll leave it at that. With that being said, um, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go to open work sessions followed by closed work sessions.
So move?
Second.
Oh, I know what my word, I'm sorry.
There's discussion in this as well.
I take that back.
Councilman Hall, I'd, glad to have you back. I know you wrapped for a while.
Good to be back.
Glad to have you back. That was it.
I know it's questionable whether I was gonna stay or not, but.
It's good to have you back. Uh, so we have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, meeting's adjourned. We go into open work session. Um, legisla, first item on the agenda is legislative bill 2017-08, Rules of Legislative Procedure. Uh, I think the council members have this in front of you. I have it on page 118 in the, uh, PDF file.
Yeah, Mr. President, um, you know, I think we envisioned that, this work session to be something with the executive's office and the county attorney. I mean, you know, and I'm not, I don't know if that didn't get communicated, but they're not here, so I don't know. Is it worth even having a work session on this? This is something we all need to.
Okay, yeah.
Come to agreement, you know, be, you know, this, reviewing the law that currently exists in county code, it seems kind of a remnant of the, um, of the previ, you know, the council form of government. And with this, you know, the recent issue with the landfill, you know, we discovered there was some issues with how laws are passed and communicated with the county attorney and with the council and with department heads. And, um, you know, I thought, you know, this is a, a way to figure out for the executive and the county attorney and the council to figure out a better way to do things.
If, uh, Councilman Kilmer, you would like to request a table, that's, uh, you could certainly put that on the table?
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not requesting the table. I'm, I'm just.
Till the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, i- if the council wants to talk about it, we can, but I think it would be a much more informative meeting if we had, you know, everyone else here to give their input on, on what it should be. I mean, if it's just coming from us, I don't know how, how useful, um, without their input. But, I mean, I, I'm open to doing whatever you want, but that's my thoughts on it. I'm, I'm surprised that there's no one here, but.
I understand. I understand. Well, what we can do, uh, it doesn't formally require a table because it's not a, let, you know, it's not a resolution, it's not being passed in the legislative session, but I can certainly, um, we could certainly table it for today if, uh, if that were, um, what you were suggesting, and then we can put it in two weeks and make sure that we have the executive branch, um, invited to the work session.
I'll remind them, yes.
I think it'd be more productive.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's just, just to be, to make sure it's productive.
Were they invited to this or were they informed of this or whatever?
Yes, they were informed of this work session. Um, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Kilmer mentioned it the last time it was, um, introduced. Um, and also, um, this is on the agenda for a public hearing at the March 21st meeting, which is the next council meeting, for a public hearing.
For a public hearing?
At the next meeting.
Correct.
But we would have to introduce it as a legislative bill in order to.
It's already been introduced.
Oh, it has?
Yes.
Sorry, my bad. Okay.
So should we, should we go ahead? I mean, due to the fact that we're gonna be voting on it next.
Yeah, let's iron, let's iron out some of what we want here and, and I'm sure they can watch it or watch the tape whenever they choose, and if they have anything they'd like to add, they could certainly do that.
And to be clear, we don't need the executive's approval of this.
Right. Okay, I think.
But it'd be nice to have it.
I understand.
For his input anyway.
Yeah.
Councilman Kilmer, is there, would you like to start the discussion since I know this is a legislative bill that you had, um, introduced?
Yeah, I mean, um, so I guess the reason why we saw a need to, um, change legislative procedure is that it, it didn't seem that, you know, talking with the county attorney, you know, they didn't know that one piece of legislation didn't pass and it, but apparently, and I guess Laura would know this since having worked in Department of Law before, when bills pass and are signed by the executive, they come back to the council for compiling. I mean, can, can you run through the kind of the process of what, what happens when legislation's passed?
Sure, sure. Once a legisla, legislative bill is passed, um, we have a certain amount of time to send it over to the county executive's office, and I believe that's five days. You wanna correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Baker. Um, once the county executive then signs the legislation, he then sends it back to the county council office for the council president and the council administrator to sign. At that point, it is stamped enrolled. It is filed in a permanent file. It's also posted on the county's website.
And there, there seemed to be, um, you know, confusion about that department heads don't know if a law passes or not. I guess they rely upon communication from the county executive, I would guess, um, in that. And so this would be the way to say that, um, if the county executive, um, you know, signs a bill, that the county exec, the director of administration will supply that to department heads and they can't act on that, any change in law until they've received a copy of the actual signed legislation. It would ensure that people know what is law and what is not law. And, um, you know, it also has provisions in there that if the executive vetoes a bill and the council overrides, that then the, you know, the council would then, um, uh, council administrator would then transmit that bill to the executive, department heads and county attorneys. Everyone would be clear what happens there. And, um, I mean, I know that, you know, looking at the other law, I mean, I had a conversation with, uh, Councilman Matt Holloway, and he's talked about some of the language in there about council secretary, that maybe we should look at that too, 'cause that seemed a little bit.
Yeah.
Archaic, um, yeah, so.
I was gonna say that, uh, if you look in the existing text under paragraph E, uh, secretary, when secretary is mentioned is capitalized, which is actually referring to the elected position of secretary.
That's right.
Which we don't have, uh, on our council. Um, so I, I suggest that we, any reference to secretary be changed to council administrator because that's truly what we're meaning in that instance.
Yeah, I think so, too.
At this stage, um, corrections or changes that might be introduced, are there changes that we can make as friendly amendments for, um, for this bill, or does it, would we formally have to amend it in session?
Uh, no, I, I mean, you could discuss them in the work session, but they would have to be formally acted upon as, um, an amendment to the legislation.
An amendment.
At the next council meeting.
Okay.
Now, I might add, uh, I mean, Mr. Kilmer's absolutely correct. The, um, rules set forth for legislative procedure have not been changed probably in the last 20 or 30 years. So they definitely needed, uh, revising, especially to accommodate the, uh, change in form of government. Uh, this proposed legislation, uh, basically sets out the procedure, uh, for the whole process that occurs after the council, uh, actually adopts a legislative bill, um, and I think assigns, um, the duty to notify the department heads very well. And it covers all three, um, possibilities, you know, the executive approving, the executive doing a pocket veto and the, uh, doing a direct veto and being overridden. The only provision I have a problem with is the last sentence, uh, where it says, "No department head may undertake any action in accordance with approved legislation unless he or she has been provided with a copy of the enrolled legislation." To me, that just creates all kinds of hazards and roadblocks when you've adopted a law to say if somebody doesn't know about it, they don't have to pay any attention to it. It has, uh, probably a good outcome, uh, for this particular situation that generated this. Um, but if you, if the council decide to adopt a, an affirmative law, uh, going back to the old days, if you do, you adopted regulations on sexually oriented businesses, uh, in a zoning code, then you can't enforce it unless you can prove that the department head got a copy of it. Uh, and that just creates, and when did he get a copy of it? When, when does the 60 days start to run? Normally, the, once the executive has signed the bill, you have 60 days before that law takes effect. Um, and now you've got confusion over what date did the law take effect? Is that when the department head got a copy of it? Um, and with this being in here, it could be something that comes up 10 years from now. How are you gonna prove when the department head got a copy of it? Um, to me, it just creates confusion in an area that should not be confusing. And any other legislative body, when they adopt a law, if it's not vetoed, it becomes law within the timeframe, in our case, 60 days.
It doesn't require.
It doesn't require another item of proof as to who got what when.
Right.
And if a department head doesn't like the bill, doesn't like the law, he doesn't have to enforce it, and then you've gotta be able to prove that he actually got a copy of it. Uh, it just creates, to me, um, a lot of uncertainty in that area.
And I, I think, I think that's fair. Um, I think that, you know, again, you know, as you mentioned, this is kind of in response to the situation we had.
Sure.
Where a department had acted, I think, in good faith, that, you know, he thought the law was the law and it wasn't. Um, and, uh, you know, I guess it's hard to know what to do in a situation where, let's say, that happens, where a law isn't passed, but it's enforced erroneously, or on the other hand, when someone, you know, what happens if an exec, you know, a law, we, we pass, we override a veto, let's say, and, and the executive doesn't want to enforce the law, what, you know, what, 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 what happens there? And, you know, in that sort of situation, because, you know, that, that could be kind of what you're talking about, is that if, you know, there's some, there's disagreement between the legislative and executive, the executive doesn't want to enforce something, he just says, "Well, don't send it," and that's his way of not, you know, his or her way of not doing it. What, what, what is there now to deal with that sort of situation?
Well, again, I mean, once you've adopted a law, if he hasn't vetoed it.
Yeah.
In any way, shape or form, or if his veto has been overridden, that is the law.
Yeah.
Now, if he fails to enforce the law.
Yeah.
Then you've got malfeasance in office and potential other things, uh, to rectify that. Um.
Yeah.
Now.
All right.
It wa, it was simpler when it was a combined Department of Law, because we made sure that any department head that was behind legislation, if it was planning the zoning, if it was Public Works, they always got a copy of the bill through our office, so.
Well, it's, it's my understanding now that, um, the, I mean, you know, with this situation that we had, was that the county attorney, their office didn't, did, you know, receive notice of this and, and said that they don't routinely receive any, you know, any notice of what bill is law and what's not. And I don't know, again, you know, the county attorney's not here to talk about that, so I don't know what, what the actual case is. So that, again, I would have thought that that would be the county attorney's, um, duty, if something's law, to be, you know, to be the person that, that does that. But that, that isn't happening, so.
I, actually, your wording, uh, the wording of the bill up to the front, I think, takes care of a lot of that, because if the executive approves the bill.
Yeah.
He should be sending it because he approves of the legislation.
Yeah.
If he vetoes it and it's overridden, you've got the council sending it out. So either way, now somebody should be getting the cop.
Okay.
The affected party should be receiving a copy of the bill.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to taking that last line out if, if it's, if, if everyone else wants to. Um, that's fine.
Yeah, I think the last line almost gives any director an out.
Yeah.
For saying that they, they just weren't aware.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then I also think that, you know, talking about, we're almost talking more about notification procedures.
Yeah.
Rather than legislative procedures. So, you know, that's more, I think this addresses what we're trying to address, but we can look into better, uh, notification on the website or, or some way to further notify of an active legislation. That doesn't necessarily have to be legislative.
Who put, who puts the legislative bill on the website once it's been approved?
The council office does that.
Whether, however it got approved.
If it wasn't approved, it would say pending or failed, but it would still be up there that it was introduced.
Okay. I'm good.
Yeah, I think, uh, the, the body of the text, as far as what's being recommended, suffices without, um, taking action to reprimand, reprimand the department head. I think everything else is covered. And of course, reprimanding the department head, that would be the executive's job to begin with.
Right.
If it were the department head that were at fault, you know, that's not always the case, but, um.
Okay.
Well, if Mr. Kilmer's prepared to add our session, or if you're prepared to make the amendment for removing that line of text, and I'll make the amendment regarding the secretary language.
That's fine, Bobby.
Is there anything else that we?
Anything else, um, council members want to say as far as corrections, changes? What I would suggest, um, is that, um, the minutes from this work session before they're even approved by the council, if we could make sure that within the day or two, if we could just get these, these minutes typed up and over to the executive branch, so they know exactly what transpired tonight and they could always, you know, give us their input.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay? All right. Any other discussion?
Uh, the only other item I would put, and, uh, 'cause I see you're gonna discuss your goals, it may be a good idea to look at all those rules. Like, we anticipated the executive and the county attorney would be here to, to look at them, because they are very, very outdated.
Not just paragraph E.
A lot of them are. It, it just might be something to put on the list of things to, to work on.
I think we've been finding things in the charter and in the code every since the county executive form of government came along that we've tweaked here and there, you know?
And this, these need to.
The past 10 years, we've been doing that, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Baker, how would you suggest we go about that?
Uh, I assume if you're gonna come up with a list of items that the council wants to see worked on, if that just goes on there, then after a couple other major projects are done, I can take a look at it and go over it with Laura and come up with some other recommended changes.
It may be something, I guess, that maybe Steph could orchestrate and, um, together with, uh, with, with you. Just try to find out exactly what shortfalls there are.
Okay.
And what needs to be addressed.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, any other comments? Okay, um, moving on, next item on the agenda, uh, Mr. Lennox, Mr. Hall. Good evening. And this is gonna be the comprehensive plan.
Could we invite, uh, Mayor Guznel?
Certainly. Good evening, John.
Good evening.
State your name, uh, for, for the public watching, thanks.
Sure, thank you. Jack Lennox, uh, planning director. Keith Hall, chief of planning and zoning.
Doug Guznel, president, commissioner of Sharp Town.
I'm glad to have you here, and I know that you did, uh, uh, listen to President Guznel's discussion at public hearings, and I'm sure you have comments to make in reference to that, uh, as well to, as well as, um, I'm sure other communities that may have had concerns.
Sure. Mr. Canada, if I can defer to Keith, he's, as mentioned by, uh, Mr. Guznel, he was out in Sharp Town last evening, has had a lot of discussions the last couple of days, and is, is certainly the one to best address, uh, I think, where our, our common ground is on this.
Oh, sounds good.
Thank you. Um, secondly, I'd like to thank the council for pulling this off the legislative agenda and bringing it back to work session. Um, as Vice President Dodd has mentioned, we, we've had numerous meetings. However, nothing's over until finally the council takes action and a resolution's signed. Um, so it's not uncommon, this process, that as we get close to the finish line, we're really getting into the fine tuning. And as one of the very encouraging things that we're, we're not seeing is, we're not seeing really comments about the body of work as a whole. We're, we're down to the nuances, and the nuances where we're having some opportunity for continued discussion are specifically to the growth tier map.
Which is a whole different process for everybody.
It's very different. It's new, um, and it's something we've all tried to maneuver. It's very different, it's new, and it's something we've all tried to maneuver. However, again, under this new state administration, I think we have a better outlook than we did just two years ago.
Sure.
So, our, our goal as a county is to try to prepare a growth tier map for the comprehensive plan that is equitable to the county, as well as to the eight incorporated jurisdictions. So, as, as the end of last week occurred, President Gosnell reached out to the planning staff and expressed some concerns about some conflicts between what we were designating as one tier and what the town was designating as another tier. And that's kind of the delicate balance when looking at this tier map. You know, the county has one perspective of trying to meld all the designated growth areas in the county, and those areas around the cities and towns, and the cities and towns are looking at it from their own municipal approach. So, when Mr. Gos, when President Gosnell was talking, he's talking about preserving the growth areas that the town has identified in their comprehensive plan from becoming essentially developed on septic systems. And once those septic system developments, residential developments start occurring, it makes it very hard for a town to plan for services, to provide those services, and to annex areas especially that are right adjacent to the town.
And already on private sewer systems.
And, or maybe undeveloped as well. Now, from a county perspective, we've been very limited in our approach about what we want to designate in a more restrictive tier, specifically tier two. And I, I don't want to get too geeky about tier two, tier three, tier one, we, we've been over that. However, our approach is, until the municipality has expressed a degree of certainty moving forward, that they plan to serve these areas in these designated growth, I'm sorry, serve designated growth areas adjacent to their town, we want to leave flexibility with the county property owner to develop that at, on individual septics, and at county zoning standards and all applicable rules and regulations. So how do we combine the two? And that's really what we're trying to do, and I'm very thankful. President Gosnell invited us out last night. We've had some real good discussions with municipalities in Delmar, Fruitland, I've reached out to Hebron, Willards, Sharp Town, and the only two that haven't been any contact at this point are Hebron, I'm sorry, Mardella Springs, because they don't have wastewater treatment, and Pittsville, because they're working towards getting a growth area and updating their comprehensive plan.
Keith, when you said you reached out to, like, Fruitland, what do you mean you reached out?
I, I spoke directly with the deputy city administrator, I went and met with the town manager in the town of Delmar, I met with the mayor of Hebron.
So they're all on board?
I, I will not speak for them, they, they've been, our process has been vetted and clarified, and I, and I don't want to indicate that by them not being here tonight, that's a sign of consensus or not. That's, that's a question better for them. However, those meetings and conversations have been very productive, because it's given us a chance to describe the approach we've used in developing that tier map, especially when you get into that tier two and tier three. And that's really, again, we're, we're trying to tell the cities and towns, stake your claim, but the claim is more than just saying it's in our comp plan.
Right.
What's in your comp plan are for areas of consideration for annexation. There's no certainty. So we don't want to be restrictive on the county side to those properties. However, once a city and/or town shows that they're planning on serving with sewer as it relates to the county comprehensive water and sewer plan, that shows a higher degree of certainty. And, and that's been our approach all along, so I was able to explain that to the city and town managers, and staff that I was able to speak with. And, given that this is a living, breathing document, as amendments occur, both to comprehensive plans and to water and sewer plans, this will be amended. Our approach, we used countywide. We didn't take one set of rules for one community and another set for a different jurisdiction. So we have to look at it, again, from an equitable standpoint, and as water and sewer plan amendments occur, and the towns demonstrate that commitment or certainty that they're moving in that direction to plan for service in an area, then you will see our comp plans beginning to align. I don't want to...
Two minutes.
I don't want to dismiss this as something as simple as sequencing, but a little bit of it is a timing issue.
So as it stands right now, from listening to President Gosnell earlier, their water and sewer plan is in the process of being amended right now?
Well, where, where we left off, and, and just to expound a little bit, in 2013, the county was in the process of beginning updates to the water and sewer plan.
Okay.
There were staff changes, there were changes in the management. As a result, I don't want to indicate it slipped through the cracks, however, it did not get finalized. The town had come in, the town of Sharp Town, as well as the other cities and towns, and clearly demonstrated where they plan to serve. And the plan that they came up with is consistent with their tier map.
So how far off are we from having a finalized water and sewer plan for Sharp Town, so that it...
Well, that, that's what we're here to discuss today, that's really the crux of, of where we're at.
Okay.
We understand the town, and it's not just Sharp Town. The majority of other cities and towns mention the same thing.
So there's an inconsistency between the water and sewer plans of the towns, as opposed to their comprehensive plans?
The water and sewer plan is a countywide plan. Therefore, Mr. Gosnell and other towns have created growth areas, and the next step is to modify the water and sewer plan to be consistent with those growth areas of when you intend to plan on service for a 10, you know, the next 10-year period.
What type of process is involved in updating the water and sewer plan?
It's a water and sewer plan amendment, it, it goes through the county council, it also ultimately gets approved by the state.
Okay.
It's anywhere from a six to nine-month process.
Is it more of a defined tool as to what the true growth is going to be?
Absolutely.
A comprehensive plan is just sort of like a wish list on where we think we'd like to be, and how we think things will, will, will grow.
It demonstrates a high degree of certainty, and not only that, but that the town is capable of providing those services. Whereas in a comp plan, it's not to minimize the efforts of delineating a growth area, but it's more broad brush.
Right.
Whereas it's very refined when you get to the water and sewer plan. So what, what the cities and towns are up against, and what President Gosnell is expressing, is that if we adopt the comp plan as it is today, and, and we have these areas where, timing-wise, they're not working out on the same tier designation, it opens up development on septic systems, and, you know, again, you have to meet all applicable rules and regulations, and it's, and therefore, it makes it harder for the town to have a cohesive growth area. And it won't give them any certainty until a water and sewer plan amendment is approved, which takes approximately between six and nine months, from a conservative perspective. So I guess one of the recommendations I'm bringing, or staff's going to bring forward, or staff is bringing forward, is we, we know our methodology, our methodology is sound. It's equitable, it's reasonable, it's been well-vetted. However, we do have a discrepancy. How do we resolve this discrepancy? One of the best approaches right now is to say that anything, or any, any pending applications in the water and sewer plan for expansion of service areas that are pending prior to the adoption of the plan will be integrated into the growth tier map. And therefore, given the specific example, areas we have defined as tier three, if Sharp Town were to move forward with an amendment to the plan, those will be identified as tier two.
And I think that's how you, you explained to the council of, of the flexibility that you incorporated into the tier map specifically.
Yes, sir, this just takes it another step.
Right. And this wasn't the idea, I mean, this wasn't what you had in mind as to, you know, the, the difference of opinions that might be created, but it was just the fact that you left it flexible in case it was, in case anything needed to be addressed, and we've hit the nail on the head before we got out of the barn.
It's a good test, isn't it?
Yeah, very good.
And then I think also it goes a long way to potentially resolve, again, I'm going to avoid using the word conflicts.
Right.
They're not conflicts, it will all get worked out in the end. However, in the interim, there are differences, and we want to make sure to eliminate as many differences as possible.
So by doing this, Sharp Town will get its tier two where they have designated with their water and sewer plan, but they'll still have to go through the water and sewer plan amendment process?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and all that process will be followed, and that's, this has opened up for all the jurisdictions.
Sure.
Any pending applications for sewer expansion that are municipal-driven will be rolled in to the growth tier map at the time of adoption.
Could I just, could I just point out, I'm sorry, Mr. Cannon, that I, while the same methodology will apply, personally, I'm not aware that there are other situations out there pending, that cities and towns want to extend service to areas that were not planned in 2010. Think about what was happening in 2010 and the differences now. This particular sitting council has not seen water and sewer plan amendments, the cities and towns are not extending water and sewer at this point. I don't think you'll see a lot of changes in addition to this, but you're looking at two areas of Sharp Town, I guess, that we have...
Well, more, probably more than that.
Sharp Town is looking, as I heard last night, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sharp Town is looking at taking the entirety of their growth area in their comp plan and demonstrating it as being served in the water and sewer plan. However, and Mr. Lennox brings about a very good point, that we're not hearing, at this time, anything from other municipalities, and, for example, this does not affect Pittsfield, it does not affect Willards, it does not affect Mardella Springs, and I think most municipalities you will see want to be reasonable about where they want to share their planned service, because they want to leave those options open. And a lot of, some of them may not have capacity to serve everything if they're eighteen.
And I think, in this instance, Mardella Springs did express the desire, seven years ago, to do this, and you move, move forward with your water and sewer plan to the county.
You mean Sharp Town?
Yeah, yeah, Sharp Town, sorry, sorry, sorry. Sharp Town, sorry.
Yeah, well, and...
Yeah, so...
We, we were given this map in 2010. I, I lived in my house since 1970, it's not even being shown as being served for water and sewer. So we took that map and upgraded our sewer and water maps, and it, it mirrors, it mirrors our comp plan totally. So...
Do you have a phone ringing?
Oh, crap.
Everybody over here...
That's a constituent's call, Doug.
No, it's a reminder to take a pill. Here. I was hoping with my phone on silence, that, I'm okay, I got it. No, but we, we did this in 2013, and like I say, the, the sewer and water proposal just mirrors our comp plan, you can lay it right over the top, and it's the same.
But now, that has to pass, I mean, the...
But this should have been done in 14. My problem is, my, my concern is, what should have been done in 14, which would have locked in my, my tier two, as tier two, and, and there could be no tier three county, if it was done in 14, we're done. Now, I find out it was not.
Right. And it's, but it's, now, that still has to go through the state, and the state has to...
Oh, yeah. It has to go through the process, as Keith just... But in that interim, if you pass that, the tier map, somebody could come out here and buy this, these lands here, choice property right on the river.
Mm-hmm.
I'd buy it myself, if I had the money.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if, if what Keith is saying is, if, if we're starting a process, that, that's going to be exempt, and not be allowed to be developed?
No. I did not say that.
Oh, you did not?
It'll be tier two. If, if the process, what was being proposed for your consideration, is if the process has been started, where the town has initiated an amendment to the water and sewer plan, and it shows your area, that, if that happens prior to the adoption of this county comp plan, our tier map will reflect what your water and sewer plan request is.
Did you start that today?
Yeah. That is a town-initiated process, we've had our county Department of Public Works...
Didn't we do that?
Contact your town.
I thought we did that last night.
State planning has contacted your town today to offer technical assistance. However, this is driven by the town, this is not driven by the county. While it's a county plan, we don't have sewer service.
Let me ask you this, is there any way to anticipate what President Gosnell is describing as their future growth areas and areas that will be serviced through water and sewer? Is there any way to predict as to what the state might accept, and maybe get ahead of that, and, get ahead of that?
From a water and sewer plan perspective, they're going to have to demonstrate they have capacity.
Is there any way to, to, to judge at this point in time whether or not the, the state might agree and say, "Okay, this is the district," and then we would adjust the tier maps now prematurely to account for that difference?
I'm recommending that, again, consider adjusting the map just based on any pending applications prior to the adoption. Where we'll follow this up is through the water and sewer plan amendment process, it has to go through council, it has to go through the state. If it should come back that it's not approved, staff would recommend that you go back into the comp plan and adjust the tier map accordingly.
So what you're saying is that you, you, you're looking to make concessions...
Contingency.
Yes, which would be in agreement with what President Gosnell is requesting?
Correct.
Simply so that someone doesn't come in and buy up the properties, or something to that effect?
Correct.
And then, if anything changes at the water and sewer, and they don't quite get all the, the areas that they were looking for, then we would reverse the...
Back to our approach.
Yes.
We don't, we're, we're not recommending any deviation from our approach.
Right.
It is, again, kind of that contingency at this point.
Understood?
I think so. Yeah.
Oh, and the other part where I said, their tier, your tier three goes to our wellhead protection plan. It's hard to see. Our, our wellhead protection plan goes right through that yellow there, which is, what you're saying is tier three. I, I hope that, that won't be allowed to have septic right on top of our wellhead protection plan.
I was just wondering if a wellhead protection plan supersedes a...
No, well, I, I would recommend that as the town moves forward with any comprehensive planning and zoning options, that you look at having a wellhead protection overlay zone. And I'm not sure if your town does or doesn't, Salisbury does, La Conoco County does, and that restricts the type of development, and then Tensay, and another thing I'm...
What's that mean, Keith, an overlay zone?
You would be looking to restrict uses that are within your authority in the town, where you've identified your wellhead protection area.
But it goes out into the county.
And we have a wellhead protection overlay zone that is more restrictive than just the base zoning. Also, in those areas, even if the county elects to go with tier two, that does not preclude development of up to seven lots on septics. It does not nail it down to where you have to annex. And that, again, is that, that balancing act that we're looking for, that we're looking to have flexibility both to develop in the county and flexibility to develop in the cities and towns. Not everyone wants to live in the county, not everyone wants to live in a city or town, and we don't want to mandate that.
So as I understand it now, then, you're going to adjust the tier maps to coordinate with what President Gosnell's concerns are, the wellheads, et cetera?
We're, we're recommending we adjust the tier map based on what is proposed for the water and sewer plan amendment. Not wellhead protection areas, that's, that's a different story.
Okay, well, and I guess we could work on that later as well, because that's not, that's not impacting property rights or anything like that, which is, I think, a major concern. And then, I guess, that, that can be clarified in the future as Sharp Town better defines that overlay district, et cetera.
Within their own boundaries, and we'll continue to work with ours. The immediate, the immediate ask is that the county tier map upon adoption reflects Sharp Town's growth tier map, consistent with a water and sewer plan amendment being presented.
And, and other towns will know that they have the opportunity to do this, too, if they...
We will, we will communicate with other city towns, as we have.
Yeah. And I know you've reached that already.
And it's not even about just before the council adopts it this time, that's part of the approach.
Right.
If you're in a growth area and you're in the water and sewer plan, it's tier two.
Well, I know that...
We're not, we're not going to change anything there.
I understand that, you know, President Gosnell's concerns, there are a lot of towns in the county that I think found the comprehensive plan, the water and sewer plan, they find all of that a little bit overwhelming at times.
Absolutely.
It's a matter, it's a matter of staff to handle it.
I have two, three people.
Correct, yeah. And, and I know when all this came down from the state originally, it was like, "How the heck are we going to do it?" And there's been some initial help from the state, I know.
I, I got a grant to help write it, our, our comp plan, if it hadn't been for that, we probably never would have got it.
Right. So there's still things that need to be worked out.
And I, and a, a big concern of mine, if you've noticed, I mean, everybody knows where Sharp Town's at, our growth area is defined, I mean, we have a river to our backs, we can't go that way. We can't go north. We can go east, west, or south.
Right.
That's it.
Yeah.
So anything, anything that encroaches on us is bad.
Right. Well, of course, these gentlemen are saying they're going to do everything they can from the county's perspective to work with you on, on our end, and then, everything will come together once Sharp Town follows the procedures that are necessary to the water and sewer plan and the overlay district, to then come back to the county and say, "We're ready."
Well, I, we had planned on starting that proposal through, I thought we did last night, we made a...
You've moved forward as a commission, yes.
Yeah.
And we've got the resources in contact with the appropriate personnel. And we've got the resources in contact with the appropriate personnel.
And, and the council's not going to be adopting this tier map. I mean, it's going to take a little bit of time to adjust this, so, you know, you, you've got some time on our end.
Nine months.
This is an easy fix, is it not? This is a very easy fix.
We're going to be adopting a tier map.
A comprehensive plan.
As part of the comprehensive plan. As soon as we get to turn around the mapping, and we'll have a better indication whether there's other issues besides the ones Mr. Gosnell explained, because we have to touch base on others, and we will get back to you as quickly as we can. If not two weeks, then four weeks, but we'll be on it.
Okay. Councilman Dodd?
I, I think you mentioned this before, and I may have asked before, how many other counties have not adopted the tier plan yet?
Good question. Out of 23 counties in Baltimore City, I'd say the majority at this point have.
So there are some other than us that have not.
Other than us, for example, Worcester County has not adopted a growth tier map, but based on their zoning, it has no impact whatsoever.
I, I know, I've been at different organizations, four years ago, six years ago, they were talking about working on it then and did not adopt it. But what, what I'm fearing is other towns and municipalities will come before us again, just like President Gosnell, and saying, well, we didn't get the opportunity to make these changes or to discuss it, which I know you just said you've reached out to them. But I, I'm just concerned about flexibility once we adopt this.
That, that is a great question, and that is the beauty of a comprehensive plan, a policy document. It doesn't just sit on the shelf. It, it's a living document, and we can amend it. Any amendments would go through Planning Commission for, process-wise, and then be forwarded to the council for their consideration. So nothing is etched in stone.
That's what I'm fearing, and I'm glad to hear that.
And I think, I think you all are on it. The mayor of Delmar called and had her concerns as well. I know you've already met with the town manager.
Yes, I have.
So I think they're, they're moving forward as quickly as they can to try to address all, all the concerns.
And there'll be immediate follow-up tomorrow with the municipalities as well, and running on, you know, sharing this conversation with them in the direction we're heading. And also, with talking with the municipalities, just like going out in the public, you hear other good ideas, and there's some other fine tuning to the tier map. While it doesn't have anywhere near the impact of this, it really has no impact to undeveloped properties. There were suggestions, and even around Department of Planning said, our tier map doesn't have tier designations for non-residential zone properties. All the commercial industrial zone properties, we just, we didn't put a tier on because the tier map's not applicable.
Would there be any need to have a formal process whereby each of the towns have some type of paper where they can sign off to say that they are, they are in agreement with what's been established?
I mean, that is at the discretion of the council. I, I think, moving forward as well, you know, looking back, we're working with the cities and towns. And we have a high degree of credibility, and we're going to make sure that we're, you know, continuing that process.
The only reason I suggest that is it might be a way for everybody to cover their bases and say, well, you know, in, in a month from now, there not being any discrepancy is what the conversation was, where you can specifically say, well, we've, we've done that, and here it's all agreed.
How about conversely, if we don't receive a, receive a letter from a city or town?
Never like that.
It's always easier. A lot of people never know what they're signing, therefore they're a little reluctant.
We heard about that last week.
Councilman Dodd?
Well, another concern I have, and, and I, I think President Cannon had a good point there about signing off on something, is you know we have elections, and I think there's something going on in county now where people are saying, well, nobody was here, so we don't know what you all discussed 10 years ago. So the same thing may happen with the towns.
It could happen with any item that's in front of the council at any time.
So if there's any way to sign off.
The state does not, the state does not require it, and a sign-off is almost asking us for a form of approval. And therefore, you're, you're moving outside of your county plan and opening it up. We, we acknowledge and we respect the municipalities' plans. We coordinate with them. However, we do not approve their plan.
We have one town that still hasn't.
I don't think, I don't think it would be, at this moment, a prudent move going forward.
And then again, too, if there is a complaint in the future, like you said before.
It's open.
It's open to change.
I'm doing it, absolutely.
Okay, I, I understand.
We don't think this is a common problem.
No.
I understand. Right, any other comments? Okay, so I'm assuming that in two weeks we'll be ready to put this forward as a resolution, or if not, I guess.
We'll stay in contact with the council administrator and let you know about the progress with the mapping. While Mr. McKenzie makes things look really easy, it's a lot of heavy lifting on his end. And we'll, we'll make sure it's coordinated effort with the council administrator.
President Gosnell, are you okay with everything where we are? Where we landed? Okay.
We're going to start with Sharp Town's letter first.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Yeah. I will talk to Keith about this process again.
Very good.
I have a feeling that if he's not satisfied, we will certainly know.
Yeah.
He knows how to get up with us.
He does, he does. So, and, and.
And I appreciate, I appreciate you guys taping and letting me speak and voice my concerns tonight.
Yeah, well, every town is in La Conoco County, right?
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen, we appreciate you taking the time here.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Next item on the agenda is the animal committee. I know you have that in your, in your brief book, and there were some additional amendments to the brief book that I know Mrs. Hurley added, which I thought gave us a good idea of what, what perspective we were trying to achieve here. As everybody knows, we had a committee a few years back, and they really were focused on how we address issues with animals as far as, because at that point in time, animals were biting people, and the rules weren't strict enough, and, you know, children were getting hurt, and we didn't have any recourse as to what, how it should be properly addressed. And that's what that committee addressed. In light of more recent circumstances, especially the puppy mills and other incidents, we found out that the animals are also kind of short on their rights, and it is something that is, is a concern of citizens of La Conoco County, where they want to try to resolve that issue so we don't see this occurring again, where you have animals who are suffering, and, you know, you have this huge unfortunate incident that occurred, I think, what, within the last year. So that being said, we're trying to get some input from the council, and maybe their thoughts as far as establishing a committee similar to what was done a few years back, and maybe what directed, what direction we want to give this committee if we decide to go forward with it. So we're just looking for any input.
How would we choose a committee? I, I do like this idea, and I, I think it's long overdue.
A lot of the names that would, would come from the prior committee if they were interested in, in also addressing these concerns. I think there are other groups out there that could certainly help us.
So do we need to advertise for possible members to this committee? I'm trying to see if there was any names posted from.
It's a good question. I'm not quite sure how we did it the last time. I don't know, Joe, if you would be familiar, how we, how that committee came together the last time?
It didn't seem to have a problem getting a committee together because there is enough, you know, folks interested in, in animal welfare. You know, that, like John said earlier, that all started, we had a mauling down near Willards with some, a young man severely injured. And so that's how it, that's how it came about. I don't see where there would be, I think we'll have enough people that, that are interested to form a committee. Put the word out, however we want to advertise it. I know one young lady that was on it, and I think she's expressed an interest. She doesn't want to be on it again. You know, she's got other things going on right now, so.
Yeah, perhaps the Daily Times could, could mention something.
Maybe through a news article, you know?
It should be a diverse committee, like somebody from the Humane Society, somebody from the sheriff's office.
That's what we did last time, yeah.
Because I, I've been looking to see if there was a formal structure.
I see somebody put in here, they didn't want somebody on there from the.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I was wondering why.
Well, I'll put that down.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I mean, we've obviously had, you know, some, some, some folks, you know, who brought concerns about some, you know, maybe the law went too far. And I've talked with Mr. Basamo, I think that's his name, with the Humane Society, and he says that, you know, law should definitely, there's some nuance in the law that maybe we should have in, in discussions even with, you know, some judges and things like that, where they've noticed things, and applying the law that, that we definitely need to have addressed. So, you know, the quicker we can move on this, I think, you know, La Conoco County, I think, is an outlier in terms of, let's say, dogs being sentenced, for lack of a better word, to, you know, be euthanized and things like that. And, you know, you know, that, that can obviously have a real impact on a family if their dog is sentenced to euthanize, where if, you know, that dog were in, you know, Delaware or somewhere else, that it wouldn't have happened that way, you know? And so our, you know, if we can move on this quickly, I think, and, and maybe, you know, have it be more nuanced, have, you know, more, more realistic, I, I think that certainly we shouldn't find trouble from the public, people who are willing to serve on it, and, you know, it would be something we can definitely do for the community, so.
I think one of the things, if we could acquire documentation from the court cases that were tried, and we could see, you know, what worked and didn't work when they did go to court. I understand that one of our, one of your attorneys was handling that in your law.
You mean the animal appeals law?
Well, the animal appeals, but they also went to circuit court at some point in time, but, you know.
The state's attorney's office.
Yeah. If we could get, if we could see those cases, I think that would give us some direction, you know, of what was going on. Another thing we need to address in here, there's more than just dogs that cause problems. We've had big issues down on Mount Herman Road with feral cats and people, you know, and I think that's something that's county-wide, so I think when we do this, we need to include, you know, more than just dogs and address it across the board.
I, I agree. I've, I've seen areas where people will go feed these cats, and they just keep breeding, and people keep feeding them, and.
We've had that problem down on the east side quite a bit, so. Some of the municipalities, and I think maybe in another case, we need to address how we handle this situation in some of the smaller, I think Salisbury probably takes care of their own problem, but I know Pittsville, I've had issues down there where people call me, it's that problem. So maybe that's something else we need to, to address in, in the animal welfare, or however we want to. People refer to this as the dog law, but it's, I think it should be expanded.
If we put this committee together, I think council can maybe give some direction, you know, in terms of these are issues we see, and then the public can obviously, you know, chime in too about, you know, and, and reach out to the towns. I mean, I know Sharp Town had at one point a, a large, you know, issue with feral cats, you know? People left town and left their cats there, you know, and they moved out of their house. And, you know, you know, I mean, it happens, I think, in all the smaller towns, you know, you see cats running around everywhere. So, you know, reach out to the towns too and kind of see what they want.
Okay. It's, it's called the Dog Ordinance Review Committee. I think maybe we need to change, first thing we probably need to do is change the title of that.
To animal.
Yeah, you know, so.
So I guess the question is, you know, where do we reach out for the resources? It's been mentioned, some, with the judges, that the state's attorney's office might give us a good idea of, of what they're looking for. We could certainly contact the municipalities to see what challenges they've, they've run into. Without a doubt, I think we'd want to contact the Humane Society. He, certainly when he was here last, had a lot of suggestions.
That's right.
Said he had a lot of recommendations on where we could, what we needed to do, and that may be the first course to take. With, with someone who I consider to be an expert in this whole field, and he might be able to give us that guidance we need exactly where, where we follow up on.
Well, it's obvious he did an investigation and found out what other areas were doing, other jurisdictions, and he, he came up with a plan, I believe.
Okay.
I just don't want to see, like, one certain group of people on it. For instance, then I'm not picking on anybody, let's say breeders, and then whatever ordinance we change is going to benefit just breeders. So I think it's a diverse group of people.
I'd like to see Mr. Dodd on that committee.
I'll, I'll sit on that committee. I want to be the first committee. I'm on.
What I would suggest, what I would suggest, because the staff's going to have to probably try to work through some of this force, talk to Mr. Basamo first, Basamo, and just get a feel for what he might suggest as far as the people who would be best at this type of committee work. He may, he may have this laid out, and that would be a start anyway. And then, I mean, some suggestions here, the state's attorney's office finding out, you know, what some of the judges' opinions might be. You may get that through the state's attorney's office.
Okay.
And it was suggested too that, to see if the municipalities have any particular grievances as well. But that would be a start.
Okay. What about in the formation of the committee? There's a letter in your brief book that we drafted, thinking that we could send that to the prior committee members to see if there was interest in them serving again. Would you be in favor of?
So you start there and then see what response you get?
Right.
And see what else we need, how far out we need to reach.
It was 10 years ago. Someone might not even be around, but it's worth a start.
If you would, that'd be great.
Now, in your letter, you say they're going to meet twice monthly, consist of 10 members. Do you want to redefine that until, until we get done with this? I don't, I hope nobody thinks it's an ongoing thing for the, forever.
Okay.
Yeah, redefine that until the law is, until the law is passed, until we come to the end of the.
Any other comments? All right. That's a, that's a starting point.
Do we want to decide what we're going to call this committee?
The Larry Dodd Commission on Animals?
Yeah. Call it the Dodd Commission.
He's out of the room.
The Dodd Commission sounds very formal.
Actually, I just like that.
Formal, doesn't it? Yeah, yeah. I mean, we were talking about changing it from the Dog Ordinance Review Committee. Do we want to try?
Yeah, the Animal Ordinance Review.
Animal, Animal Ordinance Review Committee is fine.
Okay.
All right. Okay, any other comments, questions? Next item on the agenda is a work session for council priority items and goals. You have before us some items that have been listed as a compilation of work, of work sessions that I've had with Mrs. Hurley, things that have come up at the table here, many different items. The, the idea would be, is there's anything that you think's not being addressed currently that you think should be a council initiative, and how you would like to see that as far as in the lineup of priorities? There's quite a number of items already on here that I'm sure most of you are very familiar with, and could be we're covering everything, but if there's anything else that you'd like to add, and how you'd like to see established as priorities, that's why we're here today.
The number of items, of course, are very broad that we've gotten into here, gentlemen. Some of them are executives, orders and priorities also. My, the way this was done in Worcester County was each of the commissioners picked one high priority item, and, and basically they gave three items and assumed that one of them would be the highest priority. So in our case, you know, we would have seven priority items from the council people to address initially.
Right.
And then the others would be secondary items. And if they were executive initiatives, then we wouldn't have to address them, I don't think. Like the fire service agreement, which is being addressed right now by the executive, shouldn't, probably not be a priority for the council at this point. We know it'll come up eventually, but at this point, it probably shouldn't be a council initiative.
Right, understood. And, and some of the items on this agenda are simply reminders of issues that we don't want to let see go by the wayside.
Exactly.
So we include everything we think that's, that is a county priority.
Right.
And we try to make sure we don't let it go.
Right.
The difference, the greatest difference between Worcester County and how they establish their priorities and how this council establishes its priorities is that Worcester County does not have an executive.
Correct.
So their priorities are the direction of the county.
That's right.
And the direction that county will take. We're in a little bit of a different situation where many initiatives can be implemented by the executive branch. And so finding what our niche might be is, is, you know, has to be coordinated with what coordinated with what their direction might be.
Well, I think some of the council initiatives, and we've talked about this before, are different than the executive's initiatives. They hold a different, differences as priorities go also. In some cases, the executive isn't even looking at some of the items that we've identified. And we know they will not, so they should probably be high priorities, items for the council itself, because we know on the other items, the executive's gonna take the initiative to have these items.
What specifics, because I'll tell you right now, I mean, we all know that one of the highest priorities that we all ran on was economic development. Sure. But the economic development priority sort of has to be spearheaded by the executive branch, because a great part of that usually involves funding.
Funding and comp plan and...
And how you're gonna take that initiative, yeah.
Well, I don't think we could realistically look at something along that line.
What'd you have in mind, John?
Well, you know, speak analog, let's pick that.
Right.
And, you know, I don't want to do that, Mark, but it's just a specific item, that we know that the executive is not looking at this issue at all, so is it worthwhile for the council to revisit this at this point? And maybe it is, maybe it isn't, I think it should be an item of discussion. But again, you know, if we pick, each councilman picks three items that they think's a priority, and we can narrow it down, and then we can go ahead and eliminate things that, again, you know, may be an executive initiative, but not a council initiative.
Because we sent out a request initially for council input as far as initiatives, correct? And that's part of what's been implemented here. So I don't think we really defined it as priority as much as just ideas.
Correct, at this point.
Right. So I would suggest, again, maybe if the, each council member would want to turn in a list of three items that they find to be a high priority of their concern, and that way we can better get our goals in line. Of course, you can take any initiatives that are on this list and any others that you might see that are maybe more specific to your individual districts or the county as a whole, but we would certainly be willing to incorporate that.
Well, and, I mean, to Mr. Hall's point, I mean, you know, I do appreciate the idea that the council should be more active in advancing our priorities instead of being reactive. I think that's kind of what you're talking about, and I guess I approach it a little bit differently, like with this legislative issue, you know, with changing the legislative procedure, you know, that was obviously not on this list that came up. And, I mean, you know, basically, I kind of wrote it, you know, talked with a few different people, and then called up John and said, John, I want to introduce this, you know, I mean, so that, you know, was initiated without a work session first, and we went forward. I mean, I think any council member can do that. I mean, if we, if any council member wants a legislative bill, I mean, I don't, you know, unless it's something way off-base, I don't think there's any, you know, any resistance to introducing that or going forward with that and, you know, acting more as a legislative body that is proactive instead of reactive.
Good point, good point as well. Well, I would say, again, let's have the council members review this, see what they, you know, what it is they think are items they'd like to move forward, or any additional ones that they might like to add, and we'll go from there. All right?
Correct.
Good. That being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the open work session so that we can go into administrative closed session.
Second.
Second. Allies in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Means adjourn. We'll take five minutes if you...